Is getting close, I assume, I think, to being reopened. And the roadway needs to be lowered for multiple reasons, but one of them is for safety reasons because it's a hillside and there's significant wrecks occur on this. So you need to lower the road. You're going to have, what you say, sixty-one thousand some odd, almost sixty-two thousand cubic yards of material that you don't necessarily want, but you need to get rid of it to lower the road. You have a contractor that's going to take custody of the material at the location, at which point it's out of your jurisdiction. And they will have custody of the dirt and rock. You're offering a payment, not a two-fourteen lease that we're used to doing, but you're just offering us a payment based on a structure that you just shared with us, but you're offering us a payment to disturb that dirt and rock and to move it. And you're saying it's going to stay within, I assume your contract with the trucker, the trucking company or companies, is to stay within the boundaries of our mineral estate. So it's not leaving our estate. It could be used maybe for some of our headright owners or maybe municipalities. I remember Councilman Waller mentioning the dam over at Hominy might could use some additional material. Anyway, it'll stay within the mineral state to that might benefit our people and for a one-time payment. So that's what you're here for, and that's a number that you've offered us. Original fee of eighty-five thousand that would increase if your material that's going to be excavated and disturbed is more than the sixty-one thousand some odd cubic yards. Is that right?
Yes, sir. It's the excess material, what we would call spoil or waste material. That is what is taking off. And based on that, our overall is about a seventy-five thousand cubic yards, but we're using thirteen thousand of it within the right-of-way and is going to be reused and stayed right in that same area. So the material is being hauled off right now based on planned quantities. But to your point exactly, we're going to, the contractor's going to haul it. We will have trip tickets. We will know where it is going, and we're going to measure that amount. And in that way, when the project is complete, as I've stated in my proposal to you all, if it's less, no more change. We'll take the payment. We'll be happy to pay, donate, however you want to call it. Then the other is, we will add to it. We just want to pay for the material that is being taken off and outside our right-of-way on Gilcrees Museum Road.
Thank you. That's all I have, Chairman.
Councilwoman Irwin, then Councilman Redcorn.
I would like to make a motion that we accept Mr. Zachary's offer on behalf of the city of Tulsa to pay eighty-five thousand dollars for royalty lost in the construction of the hill, the area, whatever, that it goes to our annuitants. And we actually present it to the Bureau of Energy Affairs, and it's distributed to our IIM account holders.
Motion on the floor. Need a second. Second by Councilman Schalkeford. Discussion. Councilman Reevar, then Councilman Waller.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to ask our superintendent whether or not we can consummate this arrangement without requiring the superintendent's signature so as to not to trigger other regulations that might delay this process.
Superintendent, you got a response to that?
This is a novel, first time this has been proposed. I prefer to discuss with council before opining on the, what it will take to bring this into fruition or what on our side the process would look like. This is the first time I've been notified of this, so I don't have a prepared answer for you guys at this time, but I will take it under advisement and discuss with council. I mean, the OMC's within its right to make a decision on determination on what they, of course, you guys prefer to take on it is. How or when it goes through our side is yet to be determined at this moment.
Councilman Redcorn.
Call for the question.
No, no, no. Just giving us royalty lost.
Yes.
Councilman Schalkeford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
I abstain.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. Zachary. Sorry for the delay and your patience. And tell Monroe hello.
Can I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
I understand the process of getting the waiver. Is there going to be a vote on granting a waiver to the city of Tulsa in this project?
I believe, good question, Mr. Redcorn, do you pitch us your own let us know what's the next step? Is that right?
Is that clear with everybody? Go ahead, Paul.
So are we available? The last item was the, the items of the proposal were, one was getting a waiver for the project since the excavated materials are remaining in the Osage mineral estate. That's one. The second item is the city was going to pay on behalf, pay to or on behalf of OMC, the ten percent royalty amount from the excess material. And then the payment. Then the last item is acknowledgement by OMC for the city to be able to begin the project in September of 2025. And that is very critical. So I, in our last, in our prior discussions, it was actually offered, and I can't remember who, mentioned that there would be law enforcement out there stopping the city in doing this project. So I need to make sure that we have a green light to begin this project in September as it's scheduled. And the fact that we are in good relationship and standing with the Osage Minerals Council on how we are going to address either the loss, royalty payments, or whatever.
You're asking for a waiver today, is that what you're asking for?
I want to make sure what was said in our previous two meetings, something about that the nation would be out to stop our contractor from commencing work. I just want to make sure we're moving towards an agreement that we can do this project and we will, we will work out the payment process to whom it goes to or whatever, but that we have a green light to start our project and move minerals in the Osage mineral estate.
You need a waiver to do that, right?
I defer to you, Mr. Chair. I don't, I just want to make sure we're in good standing. That's what I'm here.
You need a waiver to do that. You need a waiver to go forward, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Right? Is that correct?
That's, that's my question. I do not know, sir.
Does the council know this? Go ahead, Councilman.
Chairman, that's a question I have. I'd like to ask my superintendent, if he can tell us whether or not we can grant a waiver like we do on small amounts of material, we waive the necessity for a two-fourteen lease. And I would like to ask the superintendent Trembley whether or not, does he approve our waivers or not? When we, when we authorize you to waive a two-fourteen lease, does that require the superintendent's signature? If not, I would suggest that we just grant a waiver for a fee, a waiver to the city of Tulsa to do this, if it does not require the superintendent's signature. So I'd like to know, does it or does it not require the superintendent's signature for us to give a waiver?
Superintendent, you got a response for that?
I do not generally approve the two-fourteen waivers. Those would be, the mineral council approves those. As I understand it, there's a resolution that was passed prior to my tenure, delegating that to the chairman to negotiate it. However, those are generally done without a payment, being as though payments attached to this one. This is a novel situation, and that's the part that I don't want to opine on at present until I've had a chance to confer with our council.
Councilman Redcorn.
My experience with it previously to Mr. Trembley's arrival was unless we waive it, set a scale out there, you're going to pay royalties as it rolls across the scale. That was previous work. So now we're in a no-man's land. We just passed a resolution. He's going to look at it. I think that's what you got. You're going to have to wait till he comes back and tells us if this is even doable or not. That's my thought. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, I, thank you, Chairman. I suggest, okay, so we have the one resolution, which really is accepting a dollar value for this circumstance, to monetize it. Now, I would like to make a motion that we grant a waiver to the city of Tulsa for this project.
Second, but Councilwoman Irwin. Motion on the floor. Any discussion? Councilman Redcorn.
Hey, Will, the previous resolution we just passed, we still need feedback from the Bureau if we can do that or not.
For money. That's a monetary.
And I see a head shake, yes. And then kind of separately, here's a way. Thank you, Chair.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Councilman Reevar?
Yes.
Councilman Schalkeford?
Yes.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
A way. Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, council. Give my regards to Monroe.
Thank you, and I've enjoyed, this is my third time here. I, I thank you for the chicken. That was great. That was, but this by far outweighs all the food I've eaten here, so, no, I thank you. I will, I will let the Osage Minerals Council know the day we open up that place, and we'll see if we can get you a special tour before so.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I'm in it.
Thank you.
On with the agenda. Mr. Stewart, item B and O business. Stuart Stone, you got the floor, Mr. Stewart.
I was here, what, month ago, two months ago? And there was some question about the, Councilman Waller wanted to know if I had agreements with the landowners to mine rock out there. I have got one of the leases on one of the landowners. The other landowner is not willing to do anything. So I invited Superintendent Trembley here to shed some light on whether it matters whether the Osage Mineral Council should care whether the landowner is good or bad, is willing to do this or not. So I don't know if Superintendent Trembley wants to say something, or do you guys have questions to ask me? Or I know Councilman Reevar, he was concerned he didn't have all the paperwork in front of him, which he should have now at this time. So I will field questions or...
Superintendent Trembley, can you come up to the desk, please? Mr. Stone's asking what the validity is of the leases that he's using, I believe.
And I apologize for missing the conversation. The previous gentleman had my attention as he was leaving the room. I missed what was said, so I apologize for that.
It was basically whether, whether I can be issued a permit to crush rock without the landowner's permission, that I can get the permission after I have the permit to crush rock.
I'd have to go back and check two-fourteen. I think two-fourteen does require a landowner's consent prior to the permit being approved. However, I don't know timeline if it's required before you guys pass the resolution. Again, I don't know, as far as this body goes, I don't know your internal policies and procedures, whether, how you've conducted it in the past. On our end, I've been advised that we always require the landowner's consent or an agreement between the two prior to us executing the permit. So that was the question that was presented to me, whether on our end, and I advised that on our end, we need that before we sign the permit. However, the resolution, that I'm unclear on, and that would be a political question for this body.
Councilman Waller, you got a comment?
On March first, you told us you did have that agreement.
I do have with...
No, with both, you said you had the agreements with the landowners. We have it on file. We went back and checked the vocal and recording that we had, and you said you had it. And then that's why we had run into the problem on the seventeenth.
I had a verbal agreement with one of them, and I had the signed contract with the other one. The one is backed out since then.
That's point of order. I still have the floor. This is our council room.
I'm sorry.
March first, you told us you had them. And then on July second, we found out you don't have them. The superintendent's given you the right credentials on this case here, as far as that's what you're looking at. They have to have the agreement. You're talking about a quarry. That's how they are, all their other contracts we have. These guys out here did not go out there and get this before they had the agreement with the landowner. I mean, it's real easy, go over and ask executive. They own this one out here. That's whose property they went on. Go out here on the Schidler. All of them. And that's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. I think this is an issue kind of similar to oil and gas expiration and development. We own the resource underneath the surface. We have an opportunity to monetize that by extracting that resource and collect a royalty off of it, and we have a surface owner obstructing our ability to get to our resource. So in the event, if it was an oil and gas operator trying to bring in a rig to drill a well after we've given them a lease, I think that, I guess it would go down to District Court and get an injunction against the surface owner for holding us up. But it would be the pursuer that's trying to extract it that has to do it. In the case of oil and gas, it's the oil and gas operator that would have to go get an injunction against the surface owner that's blocking the access. But in that instance, the oil and gas company would have a lease in hand, the right to do that. And I think this gentleman's asking us for a lease so that he could have that, that legal standing to go to the District Court to get an injunction against the other guy that won't cooperate. So if we're being offered a reasonable rate on the material, the quarry material that'll be extracted, which is ours, that be distributed to our headright owners, I think that would be his first step is to get a lease from us. And then he'll have to fight his way onto the property to go get it. And what we would tell him, just like we tell the oil and gas companies, well, good luck, you know, that's down the street, down at the District Court and not here. And it's not in the superintendent's office either. That, he'd tell you to go down the street. I'm not sure I agree with that, but that's the way it is. So I'm thinking the gentleman needs a lease from us so that he can go to the next step. And so it's a matter of, do we want to give him a lease, and what's the royalty rate, and what's fair and not fair? That, I think, is the question. Do we want to give him a lease? And he can have a lease in hand to go do what he needs to do down the street. Thank you, Chairman.
Councilwoman Irwin.
to the Osage. Nothing changes that. I agree with this element here, but you cannot take that restricted property to District Court. So I can't help in that situation as a council. You got to know what you're talking about before you get on the microphone. So, and in those cases, that's what I'm saying, is that's our protection to, as a restricted landowner. I understand his position. He's been into this before. This is his business. I was just offering him options, but the superintendent is my trustee, and I'm going to have to stick with my guns on this one. If he had it in the first place, we wouldn't have been here. That's why I voted yes on March first, to try to help them. I can't do that consciously against an Osage shareholder restricted owner. That'd be me next.
Councilman Reevar.
Thank you. So, so the holdout surface owner is a restricted Indian? Is that true?
At March first.
You have an agreement with one owner, then another owner's not cooperating. Is that owner not cooperating a restricted Indian?
John and Tessa Trembley own the property. They have since sold the property to another gentleman, who is, as far as I know, not a tribal member. He has no affiliation whatsoever. And yes, I am here asking the council to give me the lease. I've talked to my attorney a dozen times. He says if I get a lease from the council and get the superintendent to review his records, because my attorney says in two-fourteen, there's no place that says, I have to get a landowner's permission before I can get a lease, before I can take him to court. Two-fourteen has a paragraph in there saying that if we cannot come to an agreement, it's to be arbitrated. I choose an appraiser, he chooses an appraiser, and we both agree on one. So that's how it should be handled. That way, a landowner, that way, a landowner cannot hold up your minerals just like oil and gas.
But I thought, I thought Councilman Waller was telling me that the surface owner was a restricted Indian. If that was the case, then the superintendent would be negotiating that for the, for the landowner. So we're back to where we were when I last spoke, that I think that he just needs a lease from us, and he can go in there and try to get, go through the District Court to get his way eventually. So that's all. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, there's issues on the floor. Is there a motion for granting him a lease today? Is there a motion on the floor? Third time, is there a motion on the floor for Mr. Stewart? Eric Dunn, sorry, Mr. Stewart, no motions.
Okay, can we, I have a landowner's agreement on, out there. May I have a lease on the property that I already have leased?
Y'all hear the question? He's talking about the property that's already been approved. Is that correct?
Yes. It's in the, it's in the contract there. You have a copy of the contract.
Okay, he's asking for a motion for the lease that's already been approved. Is there a motion on the floor to accept Mr. Stewart's proposal? Councilman Reevar.
Thank you. I guess I'm a little confused. So when you talk about lease, he's talking about a surface lease, permission to, to operate on the surface. What we're talking about is a two-fourteen lease, are we not, to sell rock? Right? And so do we, have we been made an offer to sell any rock? Have we been made a two-fourteen offer? Is that in here? Because if that's true, and it was an acceptable amount, I would have made a motion to, to grant a two-fourteen lease. It was fair and equitable. But I, but, what? Page twenty-three. See, I, I'm not prepared at this time to make any kind of decision. I'd like to review some more, but this has been, this has enlightened me about what the subject matter is, and maybe we could readdress it at a future date. Is that fair and equitable? Can I ask the other council members if these, if the numbers on this, on this sheet, this page twenty-three, is a fair and reasonable equitable amount?
I looked at it before.
This is a going rate?
It's going rate, yeah.
At least on your review.
As far as I know, yeah.
Now, I'd make a motion to accept his offer for a two-fourteen lease under these lease descriptions, based on this royalty amount that you've researched and reviewed.
Motion on the floor. Do you need a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Schalkeford. Any more discussion? Councilman Waller.
On this mapping of this lease in which Councilman Reevar supported, does it allow you ingress and egress from highway or do you have to cross this other property to get it?
I didn't come in on that dangerous county road. That's what I was trying to avoid.
Any more discussion? Call for the vote.
Can we read the legal descriptions into that, please?
Can you repeat that?
I'd be happy to read a legal description if you'd like me to. So in section nineteen, township twenty-two north, range ten east, the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter, forty acres, the northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, forty acres, the full southeast quarter of one hundred and sixty acres, the southeast of the southwest of the northeast, ten acres, the south half southwest of the southwest of the northeast, five acres, the north half of the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter, twenty acres, and finally, the west half of the north half of the south half of the southwest quarter of the northeast quarter, five acres, with a total of two hundred and eighty acres more or less.
Get all that nicely? Okay. Call for the vote.
Councilman Schalkeford?
Yes. Yes.
Councilman Waller?
I abstain.
Councilman Big Horse?
Abstain.
Second Chair Tishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
I abstain.
Councilman Redcorn?
Same.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Reevar?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart, and good luck to you. And if you have to go to District Court, you know, good luck to you.
I expect to go to District Court. I just, as I've said all along, we've got a chicken and an egg, and we're trying to figure out which came first. And as it was, I have no ability to go forward until I get the resolution from you and then work with Superintendent Trembley. Thank you very much. I appreciate your faith in me.
Thank you for your patience. Thank you for your patience, and have a good day. Back to O Business. On the agenda, item number C, rescind 3-207. Councilwoman Irwin, you got the floor.
I would like to floor the next two resolutions to rescind.
All right.
The day's getting long. We need to- I have to do tomorrow. I've got a lot of reading to do tomorrow.
Okay.
We're tabling?
Table, table, table.
We should table them? Okay.
Meeting minutes.
Okay. Councilwoman Irwin on item C and D has been dabbled to another meeting. Meeting minutes, item number 10. Need a motion on the floor? Go ahead. Oh, yeah. Forgot about that. Counsel, I apologize again for the- not reporting this. It's been- we got a- please take your seats. Councilwoman Irwin, we got to vote on this. If you're not in your seat, you won't be counted. You got your- you got the statement there for S&amp;P Global, $30,124.41, and the bill to Newell Log is $1,490. And they have to be paid out of the S510 account. Need a motion on the floor to do this. Second by Councilman Redcorn. Any discussion? Councilman Rebar.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I'm in favor of having this software, hopefully that we'll have a use for it, you know? Because it's with our well records locked up, at least this has given us access to some of our well records. It's really sad that we had to pay for- to look at our own well records, but that's what we're doing here.
That's true.
I would like to know, and I've asked our geologists this before, whether or not we could have more than one user access this very expensive software. For this kind of money, we're talking $30,000-plus dollars, that we ought to be able to have more than just our geologist access it. It'd be nice if one of the council members could access it. I'd like to access it from time to time so I could prepare for our meetings. Just for instance, there's some oil wells around this property that we just voted on around that quarry. I would have liked to know about the wells and study them a little bit, and about how much minerals we might be covering up, that we could be drilling, things like that. So, I would like- I'd like it's- I'd like to vote for this with the understanding that we council members will have access to that software so that we can individually use it as we need to, to do and perform our functions to help promote and develop this mineral state. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Councilman Waller? I know when we were in DC, Joanna Blackberry was there, and Scott Davis, and we were talking just exactly what we're talking about right now. And I remember, and Councilman Redcorn remembers this, as well as Councilman- Second Chair Trishawala and Councilman Rebar, they both said that you're going to have to do the best that you can. In other words, the FOIA is a pretty powerful thing, evidently. And that's what they told us. And they told us that in Washington, DC. And probably, if we asked them the same question tomorrow, probably the same answer. Call for the vote.
Councilman Waller?
To pay all of it or just for the IHS?
Both of them.
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Both of these?
Yeah.
Yes.
Second Chair Trishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin? Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Councilman- Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. That will come out of the S510 account. Right? Okay. Need a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
Second.
Second by Councilman Waller. Any discussion? Eric Dunn, call for the vote. Meeting minutes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Yes.
Second Chair Trishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Red Corn?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. I think these microphones are really a good deal, because I think the audience can hear us very well. They can hear me especially, because I have a really deep voice. You know what's on the agenda next? Call for the motion to adjourn. Second by Councilman Red Corn. Any discussion? Eric Dunn, call for the vote.
Second Chair Trishawala?
Yes.
Councilwoman Irwin?
Yes.
Councilman Red Corn?
Yes.
Chairman Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar?
Yes.
Councilman Shackelford?
Away.
Councilman Waller?
Yes.
Councilman Big Horse?
Absolutely.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, audience. Thank you, Nona, shareholders, nephew, everybody. Maria? Jeanne Bowe?